I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer and reflection as we remember the servicemen and women who are stationed across the globe that continue to fight for our freedom and way of life, and also those who have passed in our community over the past week.
Mr. McGough.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Mr. Lascom.
Here.
Mr. Joyce.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, Agenda for the Redevelopment Authority's Regular Meeting Held February 6th, 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, Applications Along With Decisions Rendered by the Zoning Hearing Board on Wednesday, February 13th, 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, This Granton Municipal Recreation Authority's 2011 Balance Sheet for December 31st, 2011.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Are there any clerks' notes?
No, Mr. Joyce.
Do any council members have announcements tonight?
I have none.
Councilwoman Evans will not be in attendance tonight as she is seriously ill, and Councilman McGough will not be attendance in tonight, they're in attendance tonight either. And that's all.
Fourth Order, Citizens' Participation.
Do we have the sign-in sheet, Ms. Marciano? I'm sorry. Our first speaker tonight is Ron Elman.
Hello, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Council knows, I usually define myself as a messenger to you guys or a critic of you guys. I know I must be a constant source of grief and aggravation for you. Standing up here, I sure made a lot of enemies. I've told people, you can make enemies two ways, walking your dog, my whole neighborhood seems to hate me for that, and standing up here, I don't, it just, it's getting... Everybody used to like me when I stood up here, now I've got a bunch of enemies. If I side with you, I get some people mad at me. When I say something adverse, I get people mad. I know what you guys must be going through. Yeah. I know you must spend a lot of hours and time on things that none of us appreciate. And I'm on your side when a push comes to a shove. In yesterday's paper, Ben McCormick wrote a harsh criticism of Council and Mr. Miller and Mr. Courtright, and I think he had a good point, but I think he just over-exaggerated in his statements. And I think Council, I don't see nothing wrong in Council being, using this podium to announce your intentions to run for an office. What Mr. McCormick failed to mention, there's a handful of people running for office that seem to have a complete indifference to the city. I don't know why they're running. They don't come to council meetings, school board meetings, taxpayers, commissioners, anything to do with the city. I've never seen any of them. You know, but they want an office all of a sudden. You know, there's just so many good speakers that stand up here with so many good suggestions like Mr. Bolus and Andy and Ozzy and Lee and Doug. It seems like, you just don't grasp them. It seems like unless you think of it yourselves, that our ideas are no good. I don't know. That's just my, uh, say-so on it. I just make this short and sweet. When I was a little boy, my daddy would buy a Packard every year or two, and the Packard, the owner of the Packard dealer named Jack Chamberlain, he was like a member of the family. I saw him so much. He would bring a car over to the house for my mother. My mother bought the car. My father didn't care if it was a convertible or a wagon or what it was. Mr. Chamberlain would bring a car over and my mom would say, "Yeah, that one." Where I'm going with all this, you have to go after sales sometimes. I read in the paper last week that Mr. Hesser is moving the Nissan dealer. The mayor or one of y'all, somebody should go see this man and stop this, or attempt to stop this. I've known Mr. Hesser for years and he's just a congenial person that you could just walk into his office if he's there and speak to him. All these inducements to give developers who have done nothing but cheat us, left and right on building permits, there's got to be something done to save this dealership from leaving the city. This is really, that's why you can't make a budget. Please, I mean, somebody take some time and go see this man and see if you can keep him here somehow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Giovanni Piccolino.
Good evening, Council. Giovanni Piccolino, one of the owners of Buona Pizza. My message is just simple.
Good evening.
Good evening. I know it's only February, but Easter will be five weeks away. If you guys could kind of roll this message on here and there in the next few weeks, I'm not sure I'll be able to make it, but we're just having a free Easter brunch from 11:00 to 2:00, Easter Sunday at Buona Pizza. Again, if you guys could just roll that message. And also, the other thing I have is that I've teamed up with a partner and Mr. Tom Moran, and we will be opening up two new businesses at the end of the block on Lock One Avenue at 534 Lock One Avenue within the next two weeks, The Corner Store and Express Coffee Shop. Just kind of ironic how they tried to throw me out of the block, now I'm the only one opening up a business there, so. That's my two positive messages for the city. Hopefully, we could all keep our heads up with this city in crisis ordeal constantly going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Piccolino, thank you for the invitation and the tour of the new business that you're opening and as well of, and for the pizza, the great pizza at Buona, and wish you best of luck with the new business as well.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gerard Hatman.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gerard Hatman from Lackawanna County's Community Relations Department. To begin this evening, the Lackawanna County Armed, the annual Lackawanna County Armed Forces Day Parade will take place this coming spring on Saturday, May 18th, 2013, on the same parade route in downtown Scranton that's followed for many years now. Our department's working in conjunction with the Armed Forces Week Committee to try to build the parade and grow the parade, both in terms of spectators and also in terms of participating organizations as much as we can. This is something we worked on last year as much as we could with the few months that we had available from the time our department started. This year, we're trying to do a bigger, better, more comprehensive job in growing the parade as much as we can to pay tribute to our men and women in uniform and all of our veterans and associated personnel. We'd like to ask Council, not obviously at the moment, but as you go through your daily business, if you can recommend any community organizations, civic groups, anybody you know who's, there's a group in the city or in the region who may be interested in entering the parade to march, to have some cars, any type of, you know, representation. It would have to be a community group like a civic group, you know, marching, some type of marching group like maybe a dance studio, something like that, but any community groups that you may know that want to participate. We've reached out to pretty much all the veterans groups, school bands, and we've got a number of community partners involved, but there's always someone who may not be aware of it or that we may have missed or may not be aware of. The two numbers that they can contact on the Armed Forces Day Committee, the first is Sergeant First Class Tammy Maslowski, and that's (570) 496-8908, and then Joe Sylvester at (570) 961-2696. And as always, we thank Council and everyone who is in attendance and who watches the meetings in helping us to develop the parade bigger and better, and every year, we aim for that goal. Secondly, we have a letter on this and we will leave it with Council's office after the meeting, but the Lackawanna County Arts and Culture Department has their annual $500 municipal arts and culture grants available for application. And this is a program that provides municipalities with the stipend to provide free arts and culture programming in the community. There's a very simple process to apply, and there's no set deadline. The department just asks that you apply approximately three to four weeks before the programming would be held. So if it was a concert series, just a few weeks before the concerts start, or if it's an art exhibit, you know, maybe three or four weeks before the gallery opens. But there's a letter that details the process. It's pretty simple, and we'll leave that with your office at the conclusion of the meeting. And third, just a note for Council and the taxpayers, the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau will hold their annual judicial sale on 10 o'clock a.m. It's going to be this coming Monday, February 25th, at the Lackawanna County Courthouse. And there is a list of properties that will be available on the county website at lackawannacounty.org. So that's all I have for this evening, and thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Andy Spreglia.
Andy Spreglia, citizens of Scranton, fellow Scrantonians.
Good evening.
I know we're in trouble financially. I'm not going to sit up there and probably you on it. I know what we got. I know what's going to happen. But you've got to put more of an emphasis down there in Harrisburg. Our solution to where we are now is down in Harrisburg. You can only oppress the people so much. You can't keep looking for ways to increase revenue on the poor backs of the poor people that are here. That doesn't work too well. A lot of people are trying to get the heck out of Scranton. You've got to get down to Harrisburg with our representatives. We're a two-way city. Maybe there's a possibility we can start charging for fire service or police protection for one of these things, just like we charge for picking up refuse. I mean, these nonprofits do pay electric, they pay sewer, okay? Of course, they have their own trash haulers, but they do pay for things that they use. But they don't pay for fire protection, and they don't pay for police protection. We have to be the great Santa Claus. The people in Scranton are actually Santa Claus to all the nonprofits. Something ought to be done. You've just got to get down there and get our representative down in Harrisburg and see what you can do. Maybe even, I know we've got a very young legislative, Blake, and our two representatives are all first term. So hence, we're at a disadvantage down in Harrisburg. I know that. But common sense might prevail if you explain that all the cities are in the same boat. It's not only Scranton. Everyone is going down the tubes, and they're going to continue to go down the tubes unless some way is changed. We've got to make an effort down there, either to get the state to take over the schools, which would help us tremendously, or some way where we can charge the nonprofits for police or fire protection, or both. I mean, we're, you and I know there's a 40% increase coming. Do you want a 40% increase? I don't think you do. I don't think any of the city does. You've got to try to head it off. That selling the sewer authority with their liabilities and this, that, whatever, I don't think we're going to get that much out of it. I didn't take a look at the audit. I assume you studied the audit to get some idea of what the sewer authorities were, how much they owe, how much their vehicles are, because it's all in the audit. Now, why you need to have somebody go out there and I guess maybe, maybe to push it, you have to say it was done by somebody competent, but the audit points everything out. Just look at what's in the audit, and then figure on the liability for that $120 million that's coming up that could be split over 20 years or something like that. You've got to look at that and figure out what we can actually get by selling the sewer authority. And actually, what would happen to the tax rate pairs when a private entity gets in there? You know, of course, when they get in there, they'll be under the state. They become an authority. Not an authority, but, other words, you'd be like the PUC, I mean, the PUC under the PUC, Public Utility Commission, because they won't be no longer an authority. Somewhere along the line, you've got to look at all these things and try to head off that 40% increase in taxation that's coming up. I don't know if you can, but you've got to make an effort now, because really, that month's really fly by. We're almost into March already. And as far as the parking authority goes, you and I know it's a lost cause. Nobody would ever buy that parking authority. There's no way. It doesn't make sense. Why would you want to buy something that they can't even pay off their bonds? And their figures, I don't know where they got them from, but we're going to be more in debt with that parking authority. And nobody actually says, "We still have a parking authority authority." I told you a long time ago, I would have asked for their resignations. I would have went out there and said, "Get the heck out of there. What you did to the city is almost criminal. I don't know if it is criminal. You would have to look, but certainly it was incompetence." And to add, and to keep an authority in there that's incompetent is ridiculous. You've got to make an action. I mean, Mr. Joyce, I liked it when you told that guy from the business to retire. Of course, they're all Democrats, so you're not going to get too much on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ozzy Quinn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ozzy Quinn. I'm with the Scranton Taxpayers Association, homeowner. May I give these to Jamie and she can have them? First, I want to send my wishes to Janet Evans for, to get well. Janet worked very hard, has been working very hard in my opinion, and she has taken the beating by the news media and taken, for a lot of things, that it's not her fault. It's the Doherty administration's fault. She and the rest of the majority up here have tried to turn this thing around, and it's, they're trying to turn it around on you. I feel very sorry for you, and I feel sorry for Janet for all this stress that she's under. I want to say that, I want to thank Mr. Rogan for coming from our, to our taxpayers' meeting two weeks ago. We spoke on some various issues in the city, and Mr. Rogan did a very good job. And that is being televised. If anybody out there that wants to look at the show, the taxpayers' program, go to, Google ECTV schedule, ECTV schedule, and you'll get the dates and times, and you go and see that show over, okay? That'll be planned for all February. You know, in 1968, when the city and Dummore ventured into that, the sewer authority, okay, having former board of directors vote in the bottom with Chase Bond, and then 1999, they had a management agreement with Anglin American, who then the subsidiary of, American Waters, a subsidiary, took over the management in 1999, rather. Then 2004, the city and the sewer authority bailed out of the agreement, and they went before the court, Anglin American, and they won the judgment, and had a judgment put against the city for $8 million, which the city had to pay. Mayor Doherty went down to Mr. Barrett at the sewer authority. Gene Barrett's a good friend of mine, a personal friend of mine in a way, and I've known him for many, many years. He OECD, and he's done a lot of good public service. However, he signed an agreement which you have in front of you with Mr. Doherty, and it's witnessed by one person, and it's a global agreement to sell the sewer authority, okay, off, all right? And for $8 million, the sewer authority borrowed the $8 million from a bank, paid off the Dummore judgment, and paid off the city of Scranton judgment, and we're left here holding back. He did not come to city council for any approval. Now, the Home Rule Charter unequivocally says that in Section 502, that he has to come to the city council for any ordinance of legislation or resolution. He just unequivocally went down there and signed that agreement. Can you imagine that? Without anybody knowing, you people did not even know that. Nobody knew that on the city council. And he says, he says, "The only thing that the sewer authority, the city council has the power now, I give them the power to, we have the power to appoint board members." Of course, he appoints the board members for your verification or second, okay? Now, come on, what do we have a Home Rule Charter for? I would talk to Mr. Uz, because I think this here whole thing is void, this whole agreement that's going on from day one, and if someone challenged, if somebody with any money ever challenged in court, we're going to be in a lot of trouble. There's no doubt about it. The PUC, when he did it, I called the PUC up, and I asked them, "What can be done? What's going on here?" You know, he didn't go to city council. The PUC again said to me unequivocally, "We have nothing to do with municipal authorities. It's not a public utility, the sewer authority. It's not a public utility." I read now where they have to get approval to sell it, okay? Now, I don't know where this is coming from. I guess it's factual, or it wouldn't be printed, maybe, but the fact is that I was told by the lawyer that the PUC says nothing to do, and they couldn't do nothing. They couldn't do anything with, in regards to what Mr. Doherty did by taking, having, taking out a loan through the sewer authority for $8 million to pay off that judgment. I think, I hope you people look into it and find out what's going on here, because it's a sham, it's a shame, it's deceptive, and it's put us in a very precarious situation for a further lawsuit in the city of Scranton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave Dobson.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton, chief troublemaker.
Good evening.
At large. First of all, once again, I'd like to express support for what Council has gotten done during this term, and I'd also like to try to influence everybody to run again, as many can. Hopefully, we won't have a health issue or something involved there, but the job is only partially done, and if you can take it, please do it, because who knows what you'll get next time. And we missed the big opportunity here. We should have bargained with that mayor's race for a term of two limit, two-term limit. It just got passed. We always seem to have some kind of crisis going on here, but none of us walk on water. There's good and bad in everybody, and I'm not talking about legislative side, I'm talking about administrative side. The power is too concentrated there, and people run out of ideas, or their ideas don't work, and then it just gets to be enemies of the glorious revolution instead of, you know, getting something done that needs to be done in the way it needs to be done. And once again, I'd like to call on, for a tax exempt, a commission on tax exemptions. We really have to, how many are too many? And I'll go to the bottom of my little note page here, because Senator Blake is looking up some type, or pushing some type of, what is it, a constitutional amendment, maybe, to ban towns from refusing tax exemptions? And now, Scranton Times had an editorial the other day on this, and it said 20%. Well, we're at 33% or 35%. How much is too much? And it's just a shame, but it's going to drain our tax base, and as you know, every year, you people make up the budget if you take what we would be paid in taxes on tax exempts, and not all of them are nonprofits. We would definitely have our budget hole filled, so we really need to emphasize this and then to lobby people like Senator Blake, because I think it's getting a little wrong-sided there. And I've been noticing in the courts when I walk Poochie, TVs are no longer accepted by DPW by law, computer screens are no longer accepted, electronics are no longer accepted, and tires haven't been for a number of years, and they're piling up in the courts. So if we could get somebody to start paying attention to that, maybe put a warning, you know, make a list and say that this is not an acceptable solution to disposing of tires, and before they wind up on my lawn, I don't need them. And, okay, now, up in Crown Avenue, and I talked to people down the street now, three blocks, at a local store, and there's a lot of animals being abandoned, and maybe people put them out after they lose their apartment, or they can't find a place for them to go. And there's a low-cost neuter clinic, EPAA, they do it up at Griffin Pond Animal Shelter. It's $60, and the number is (570) 994-5846. And I might note that the city seems to be spending a lot of money on this, so please, have your animal neutered, and then even if you did abandon the thing, which is the wrong thing to do in the first place, they won't be reproducing. And on the sewer authority and the parking meters and so forth, I think no large deals for right now. Have it appraised, have it audited, and let's get it straightened out, but that's, I didn't vote for anybody to go privatizing. Unfortunately, Chris Kelly gets the Golden Parrot Award this week, because once again, because Janet has to read off the proposals of the administration and these authorities, somehow she's listed as a supporter of it, and I don't think that's the case. I haven't talked to her about it, and she probably has too many people to talk to in a week, every week, but the point being that these were bad ideas to begin with, and they're not going to get any better. They're not going to get any better. We have, we just need to stay the course, and taxes have to go up, and that's the way it is, and then it's time for everybody to wake up and get involved. And once again, another Golden Parrot for Harry Reid, he didn't change the filibuster rules. One senator gets to dictate more power than the president, and we have Chuck Hagel, I always liked him as a Republican, and I thought he'd make a great president, but a lot of people don't think so. So they're filibustering. We don't have a Secretary of Defense. We have NATO negotiations and all this. We have NATO negotiations and all this week, but nothing's being done. So, buck, buck, Harry. I'm just wild about Harry. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too. Our next speaker is Doug Miller.
Doug Miller, Scranton.
Good evening.
Before I get into my issues tonight, I just wanted to take a brief moment just to express my condolences to the family of Ms. Diane Marincheck, West Scranton teacher who passed away suddenly over the last few days and certainly is gonna be missed in the West Side community. Made a tremendous impact on the lives of many students through the years and she was quite instrumental in many community engagements, particularly her yearly cleanup efforts over at Fellows Park. She was never a teacher of mine, but over my four years at the high school, I did get to know her and I did work with her on a few of these cleanups and she truly will be missed and just, we can keep the family in our prayers tonight. Moving on, I wanted to ask tonight if we can get an update on the Linden Street Bridge. I know that this has been ongoing for quite some time now. This is going back to when Mr. Brazil was still the head of DPW. And I know that PennDOT and other officials were going to take a look at it and I don't know if we have any update at this point.
I spoke to PennDOT, I believe it was two or three weeks ago, and the last update I had, they were just working out one or two last things regarding fiber optic cables that were underneath the bridge and with the railroad company as well. But they do expect the project to be finished before the end of the year. I will follow up with them again next week.
Okay, I appreciate it. It's my understanding that in the last few weeks, the situation over there has gotten a little worse in terms of the condition of that bridge. And, you know, I would hate to see us have another, you know, Rockwell Avenue Bridge situation on our hands where it's tied up for quite some time and it interferes with people trying to commute daily.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Are you referring to the West Lacoone Avenue Bridge?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, the West Lacoone Avenue.
Yes, I actually was over there the other day and I took some new photographs. That section is just about ready to go down.
Yeah.
I'm gonna follow up on that, too.
Yeah, I assume that's the one you meant.
With all the bridges we have out in this town, it's hard to keep track.
Luckily, Linden, now, if Linden went down, we'd be, us on West Side, we'd really have a tough commute.
Yeah, 'cause I was, I know Mr. Rogan addressed it last week or the week before about Linden Street Bridge, that's why.
Yeah. No, thanks, Jack, for correcting me on that. In regards to the parking meter issue that we have ongoing, as I've been stating for the last few weeks, it's my only hope that a decision will be made. That certainly solves the issue once and for all. You know, this morning's paper, we saw that with projections, they're projecting that we may be between $300,000 and $500,000 short in revenue. And certainly, we know that the outcome would be that the city would be on the hook for those payments and that's something we're trying to avoid and that's why I think we're looking at some sort of innovative way to generate new sources of revenue so that we avoid placing that burden on the taxpayers. You know, Mr. Spragley earlier tonight spoke about the potential of seeing a 40% tax increase. Well, if we don't come up with some sort of plan to generate revenue, I think you're looking at well beyond a 40% tax increase and that's certainly something that we don't want to have to deal with. Mr. Elman brought up a point tonight. You know, I normally don't address criticism and things like that, but there was, I guess, a letter to the editor I was made aware of yesterday and it did refer to myself campaigning, supposedly campaigning from the podium. Mr. McCormick claimed that I campaigned from the podium and lay out my agenda every week. Anybody that knows me quite well knows that I come to these meetings every week and I've done so for close to 12 years now. I'm not an individual that you only see here every four years around election time. I believe that would be the difference between myself and any other individual or any other candidate that may seek an office. I think it's pretty safe to say that of all the candidates that are running for office, whether it's council, school board, mayor, I've probably been coming to these meetings a lot longer than any of them. And that's something I'm very proud of because it shows one thing, it shows a commitment to the city. And not that I'm someone who campaigns every four years from the podium, I'm here every week. I'm in your face, I raise my issues and it's not a secret. So, to Mr. McCormick, you know, when you want to make statements, you know, talk factual information. You know, you see me here every week, you, you know, this podium's open, it's free speech. If you have an issue or concern, come on down. I don't believe I've ever seen you down here. So, rather than, you know, focusing our time on all the negative energy, maybe if we put that much effort into something positive, we might be able to get something accomplished in the city. Rather than worrying about who's running for an office or who comes down, who speaks, let's put all that effort into something productive so that we can move the city forward. We come here to try to find solutions to move the city forward, rather than coming down here being critical and, you know, playing personal attacks, I just think it's irrelevant and it has no place in what we're trying to do here. And, you know, finally, tonight, it was stated earlier this evening, you know, about the criticism that the council's faced, whether it's in the media, you know, the Scranton Times in particular, you know, its writers, Chris Kelly, the editorial board, you know, all the articles and the editorials that they've done recently in regards to the decisions that this council has made. You know, maybe if they took a second to sit back and actually see how difficult these decisions are and what you've had to go through, you know, especially last summer when we had to go through the recovery plan and the budget process and all the obstacles that you faced, they'd see how difficult it truly is. You know, it's easy to sit back, as I've said, and sort of cheerlead from the bleachers and tell elected officials how they should run the city and name call and blame this one and blame that one. But, you know, take a look and see how difficult it really is and the situation the city faces. You know, it's all well and easy to sit behind our computer screens and write our letters to the editor and blame this one and blame that one. But, like I said, come forward and put all that energy into something productive and that maybe if we put our minds together, we can turn the city around because it's about cooperation and coming together. That's the only way you get things done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bob Bolus.
Bob Bolus, Scranton.
Good evening.
Hate to see Mrs. Evans not here. You know, I hope she has the speed of return. She's no, it's no fun without her being here, you know? It just takes the fun out of it. As you know, we put a suggestion in that we're interested, our group is interested in taking over the city meters and I'd like to pursue that. If we're gonna do something about it, then we may as well do it locally and then, instead of giving it to somebody out of the area. So, I want to make that approach to council before you do something else with it. We'd like to review the contract, we'd like a copy of it, and we'd like to submit our own offer. I believe meters should be put all around the university, all around their commercial properties that they're leasing and renting out to students and people. Meters should be put there at the same rate that they want to put everywhere else in the city. There should be no separation as to who's who and where they should be. That's all lost revenue on a daily basis since they've been taking a free ride. We should go after them with the Chick-fil-A and everything else inside. Those are commercial businesses. They shouldn't be exempt. The parking garages all throughout the city that we've been in litigation for God knows how many years and yet nothing's come to fruition here. There's litigation, why isn't it pursued? What's Paul Kelly doing? He wants to earn an extra fee? Go get our money on the parking meters and the parking garages, especially those that are owned by the Naples that we've never received a dime for. And yet he's tied us up with litigation, now he wants to continue litigation. I don't know if anybody today watched the dust storm going across the interstate, across Dummore and all from the landfill. That one was blown, it was a dust cloud going across. Well, if you don't know anything about pollution, think about airborne carcinogens going through the air and that's what we're breathing. That's our real health hazard. So, I believe people, especially in Scranton, council may want to send a letter to DEP and inquire about why we have to breathe what's coming from a landfill because of the height and the wind blowing across there. One only needed to look at it today to realize what I'm saying here could be serious health consequences for all of us and we don't need to have that. Us, our children, and their children for no reason. You know, the Scranton Times, I heard Mr. Miller talk about something. Well, Mr. Miller doesn't know. I took it to litigation when I was a candidate. And we defeated the council that was here that was trying to prevent candidates from coming here and speak. And they lost. Every candidate, including Mr. McCormick, who wants to sit back and play with his computer or whatever, if he's got an issue and he knows how to make the city any better than it is or any worse, come here, it's a free speech. So, don't think he could sit there and deny any candidate or any person from coming here and speaking out. We took it to court, Mr. McCormick, and we won. It's free speech for everyone, including yourself and any of those that want a quarterback from a bleacher. I think when you sit here and you listen about the meters and stuff, they should put a big dartboard behind you guys because nobody's had an accurate figure yet before the three judges, before anybody. And throw a dart, see what we come up with because it's the best estimation of where we are financially. So, let's just play darts next council meeting. I think we'll get more out of that than we will with all the hypotheticals that we're shooting around the place. Scranton needs a forensic audit, once and for all, and know where you're going because we're in the dark, we're blind-alleyed, we don't know what we want to sell, what we want to do next because we have no clue. And we need to get a clue, we need to know where we're going, and then make intelligent decisions. So far, we haven't made a single one that's intelligent. Now, it's the sewer authority. It's this, it's that. I think before we put City Hall off for sale, we should fix the lights in here. We'll get a heck of a lot better price than you could see in here. You know, you see Mr. Volpe, there's another guy. He wants somebody to do his dirty work. He's like Mr. McCormick. He won't run for an office, he won't come out here where it takes a lot more, as each and every one of you know, myself and other candidates, what it takes to really run for a public office. He's tried it and lost. If people wanted him, they would have put him in office. So, don't come around and want to change how the commissioners do business, how we live our life. If you want to be a change maker, run for an office. But don't ask the people of Lacoone County to do your dirty work. It's not gonna work that way. The KLC's and profit, I'm sorry, KLC's and nonprofits, you ought to go after them, you need to go for the fees, you need to bring in money in the city. There's millions and millions of dollars out there. Don't look at liquidating the city, look at going after the money that's owed us. You have the icebox down there. Let Paul Kelly figure out how to break the lease right now for a dollar a year, for how many years? And we'll take over the rent down there, we'll take over the property or we'll put it out for bid and pay our bills. There are many, many ways here in the city to generate income from our assets and that's not selling them and that's not giving away. We can't be that stupid, we can't run the meters in the city. You're paying over $100 grand for a guy to walk around with parking garages and administer that, yet you want to have a mayor in the city and paying peanuts to administer a $90-some million a year budget. And last, last week, I faulted council for changing the agenda by putting motions first, changing the agenda items that we didn't get to speak on before you voted on them. I personally think, and it's been challenged in the past, that was illegal to do because we had the right to speak when you changed the agenda item that was on the agenda. So, I think you have to revisit that, maybe make a motion to put it back where it was, then let people speak on it and then vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council tonight?
Marie Schumacher, city resident.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Lascom for providing the quantity of false alarms for last calendar year. Thank you. Continuing where I started last week on the Rich Report, did you all read the Rich Report? Okay.
The parking report, is that what you're? No, I haven't, in fact, I've got to request a copy. The last copy I have of a Rich Report, I believe, is 2003.
The last, I think, four was the one, the previous one. Okay. Because the Rich Report states, based on this, which was a dialogue, "It appears that the on-street parking meter may be adequately staffed with four issuing tickets, one collection and repair person, and one on-street coordinator." Now, I'd like to make a little comparison between the parking authority and what we've been told about SP Plus. First of all, in 2012, the city budgeted $562,000 for the employees and to pay for the expenses, which is $416,000 less than the amount that Mr. Hughes estimated will be paying to SP Plus for their operating expenses. I believe the figure he used was $978,000. And next, the 2013 budget prepared by the administration and you all increased the revenue from the parking meter violations by $300,000 over the 2012 budget, attributing the increase to the upgrade of meters that will take place. So, that's a wash. If you put the new meters in, it doesn't matter who's, and you've got the same people doing the citation issuing. So, so far, the SPA is still ahead of SP Plus by $116,000, even if you give all that $300,000 to SP Plus, though one could argue that the SPA would have collected more with the new meters as well. Mr. Hughes estimated the citation revenue would increase by 1.1 million by the enhancement of the meter people and with the conversion of the meters. Since the citation issuers are, if we are to believe Mr. Valero, the former SPA people and will be trained by the manufacturer of the new meters according to the proposal from IPS, with the balanced credit to the new meters, it's again reasonable to assume that the Scranton Parking Authority would have achieved the same increased revenue with the new equipment and training. Bottom line, it's entirely possible that we could do as well or better with the prior SPA agreement than with the SP Plus agreement. The only thing SP Plus brings to the table is financing the new meters. But if you put in that overwhelming $120,000 a year, I think that the interest we're paying on those meters goes up quite a bit. I believe that a lease of the new meters from IPS should be investigated, if it has it already been. Do we know what IPS would charge to lease the meters to us instead of an outright buy?
We don't know that.
Because they're not, I mean, we're gonna pay all that money and we're not gonna have, according to Mr. Valero, we're not gonna have any value because they lose their value after seven years. So, I think you really need to look. Is that gonna be brought off the table tonight, by the way?
No.
Yeah, I think that's sort of imperative that you get that off the table because that, the new meters, all this revenue is attributed to the new meters according to all sides. So, every day that your week that you put off addressing that issue is another week that the parking, or new meters aren't put on order and are not functioning. So, we're just cutting, cutting the revenue for this year. Finally, after reading the Rich Report, it's imperative that Mr. Washo appear before council to answer the many questions raised by this report. I would like to know why the Scranton Parking Authority garages offer a monthly rate of $80 to the county employees, yes, those people who spend our tax dollars but won't give a similar break to city businesses, yes, the people who pay the taxes on their grocery receipts. Whether or not they make a profit, the government gets their share of the top, off the top. Now, we know from that report, if anybody has read it, that the garages are severely underwater. I believe the valuation put on the garages was $22 million according to the last audit report. We owe $54 million in principal and, of course, another, almost a like amount in interest. And there is a big, apparently, a big maintenance bill coming up. I mean, in the millions of dollars, not huge, but in the millions of dollars, and I'd like to know where that's coming from. And if I may, just one more thing on the other item that's tabled, which is, is there someplace that I could read how it is a procedure for selecting where parking meters are placed? Is it just random? Because, I mean, for instance, somebody called to my attention the fact that in the 500 block of Jefferson, there are parking meters and that's in front of the Amos 500 block of Jefferson, there are parking meters, and that's in front of the Amos Towers Building. And so all the people there who get, either people coming in to help them clean their apartments, sometimes get $20 tickets, but if you go down to the 600 block of North Washington Avenue, there are none, none at all. And I don't understand that differentiation, and I would think there's some kind of a procedure, and maybe you could research that and see if there's a way, some methodology that is used that could be shared with the public?
Yes, that's something we'll have to look into. I believe there would have to, I believe when these meters were put into place that there would have been some sort of study to decide where these locations would be.
Well, that's what's in my head, too. There must have been something, or there must be some kind of methodology, and I think that needs to be brought out and maybe changed or followed, and instead of just this block, yes, that block, no. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Mrs. Craig?
5A motions.
Mr. Rogan, do you have any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, thank you. I would also like to start off, as Mr. Miller did, to send my condolences to the family of Mrs. Marincheck. She was my ninth-grade science teacher at West High, and she was liked by everyone. And I could speak for most freshman classes, we weren't always the easiest to deal with. But she, she was always very kind to everyone, and she was a great teacher, and she will be missed in West Side. Next, onto a few items. I'd like to thank Representative Kevin Hagerty, and specifically his Chief of Staff, Joe Fabricator, for contacting me earlier in the week regarding a grant that Pima is opening up for emergency generators, for emergency shelters in the area. And I did pass that along to Mrs. Craig, who then passed it along to everyone who's handling that issue, so hopefully the city will be able to reap the rewards of that grant. And once again, thanks to Representative Hagerty. Next, I would like to comment on the report I received from OECD regarding the loans. It's very lengthy, so I'm going to break it down by weeks. The first week, I'm going to start off positive, and name all the businesses who have received a loan from OECD and that loan has been satisfied. Then next week, I will address the loans that are open, and then the week after that will be the loans that are in litigation. And just to get the number out there regarding the dollar amount for what's in litigation, it is, when you add it up, it's over $2 million worth of loans that are currently in litigation. But these are, this list of businesses or businesses that did receive loans through OECD and have fully repaid them. 119 Jefferson Associates, 410 412 Spruce Street, Preferred Produce, Scranton Dunlop Incorporated, Sicas LLC, Ashkar Lackawanna Station, Backyard Ale House LLC, Electric City Television, Jays Commons, United Neighborhood Centers, F&amp;M Restaurant, Greek Bistro, About Time Cafe, Main Street Tent Rental, and Mitchell's Restaurant. So these are some of the success stories where the loans were paid off and taken care of, and they were satisfied, so they are the success stories. And as I stated, next week, I will list the longer list of the open loans, and finally the also long list of loans that are unfortunately in litigation. Excuse me, and the one that really seems to burn me and many residents the most is the infamous Molly Brannigan's loan for $650,000 that still remains unsatisfied. Next, over the last weekend, I had a resident contact me who lives on West Mountain, who had an issue, and just to briefly address the problem, on West Mountain Road, there is significant runoff when it rains because being built on a mountain. The resident who contacted me stated that the DPW went on there and, on his land, diverted some of that water that was washing down onto his property, which could cause a very big problem. And I went up there, and by looking at it, and I'm not, obviously not an engineer, but by looking at it, all the water on this road travels on one, down one side. There are gutter system established for that, and they were clogged with leaves, debris, bricks. And instead of addressing that situation, or if it was the sewer authority's responsibility, passing it on to them, what they did was they took a section of this resident's property, took a backhoe to her, a front-end loader to it, pushed out a cut, and diverted all that water coming down the road onto his property. And there is no doubt that there is a problem with water on that road, and something has to be done, because you could see the road being eroded away where all the water is washing down, and it's something that needs to be addressed. But by diverting water onto somebody's property isn't the right way to go about it. There is a police report. The police report also states that the residence contacted DPW, and the DPW informed them that the city would not correct the problem that they caused on February 13th, when they plowed the ditch onto their property. Now, they also showed the concern for the black drainage pipes on the other side of the roadway that seems to be the issue that should have been addressed, because it's overflowing going out to the other side of the road. This is just another one of these issues where it seems that things were done without thinking them through, and this is another issue that may resolve, may end up in the courts as a lawsuit. Because the property owner obviously doesn't want all the runoff from a road traveling onto his property. And when I spoke to him, he mentioned that it may wind up in litigation, and we surely hope that doesn't happen. So Mrs. Craig, could we please send this to the DPW and ask if they could reach out to the residents? They know who they are, they've contacted the DPW numerous times on this issue, and see if this could be worked out without it getting into litigation where it's going to cost the taxpayers more money. I also have a few more requests. Please send a request to the proper city departments asking the status of the Rockwell Avenue Bridge. Some residents called today asking for the status of this project. And I did look up in the Scranton Times, there was an older article regarding this, and it mentioned about PennDOT being involved. But PennDOT is only overseeing the safety, they're not actually, it's not actually a PennDOT project, from speaking to them. So this is, you know, a project that I know the residents of North Scranton are, have been waiting a long time for this to be complete. Next, another request to DPW that Dewey Avenue behind Lackawanna Little League is plowed when it snows. Residents have contacted me and stated that they plow all around, but not on Dewey Avenue. Also to DPW, a request that Pike Street is paved, with the grant money that was recently announced that the city will be receiving, and this, unlike the funds that are used yearly for paving, this, these funds are not limited to low to moderate income areas, they could be used anywhere throughout the city. And I know, from being up at Pike Street, I know Mr. Lascom was up there as well, and I believe Mr. Lockwood from the Times, it might have been that the previous reporter was up there with me, and we looked at it, and it's, the road is in terrible condition. So hopefully, that could be placed on the list for the grant funds. And finally, another request to licensing and inspections, asking if there's a date set for rooming house inspections in Pine Brook. And also, they want to know, some people brought up the question about the outsourcing of certain inspections within the city, and they'd like to know what is currently done in-house and what is currently outsourced. And that's definitely something I think all of council should be informed about, and the citizens as well. So that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Lascom, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, thank you. Just to echo Mr. Rogan and Mr. Miller, I too would like to send my condolences to the Marincheck family, although I'm not as young as Pat, I wasn't a student of Diane's, but I've known Diane for many, many years, and it is heartbreaking. Her husband, George, was a colleague of mine for many years on the fire department. And keep the whole family in your prayers, because this last year has been, has been a tough one on the whole family. Diane and George have raised a special needs child through all the years, but she lost two brother-in-laws very young in this past year, too. So it's been a tragedy for the family, and I would like you to keep, keep the whole family in your prayers and give them your strength. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lascom. Good evening. I would just like to begin by addressing a few issues, but before I do that, I would also like to send my condolences to the Marincheck family, and I would ask that you keep them in your prayers over the upcoming weeks. Secondly, tonight, there was an article in the Scranton Times, as everyone knows, regarding the parking garages and the SPA, and that the SPA, or that the parking garages, rather, aren't performing up to par according to Standard Parking's estimates. Basically, here's how it goes. The SPA has to pay $3.4 million worth of bond payments. The city budgeted $1.9 million to assist in those payments. That leaves $1.5 million left. According to the figures in the newspaper, based on four months of Standard Parking data, it looks like we're only going to come out to $1.2 million, which would be leaving the city, or the authority, rather, $300,000 short with the additional $1.9 million that the city budgeted. Now, with this in mind, I'd like to know what Standard Parking plans on doing to meet the revenue projections that they originally provided. So Mrs. Craig, if we could please send a letter to John Rogers from Standard Parking and ask him the steps that Standard plans on taking to address the parking garages, and what they intend to do to increase revenue. It's very important that revenue is increased so we don't go over that $1.9 million amount. Secondly, there's been a lot of talk tonight about nonprofits, and I know that Mr. Spragley has said that we need to put more of an emphasis on Harrisburg, and I can't agree with him more. Basically, there's a lot of good ideas for revenue that people bring to the podium, that other council members think of, that the administration thinks of. However, the Local Tax Enabling Act, which is Pennsylvania law, prohibits a lot of what these ideas would bring to us. Basically, it sets restrictions on what the city of Scranton, as a Class II A city, can and cannot do. With this in mind, I think that a public safety fee is something that we should definitely look into as far as the nonprofits are concerned, because I know that the University of Scranton and Marywood do have a security force. However, there is, there are still instances where the Scranton Police is called out, and also the Fire Department is called out. And the Fire Department is a service that the taxpayers of Scranton provide for. So with this in mind, I'd like to construct a letter, or letters, to Representative Flynn, Hagerty, and Senator Blake, asking if they would support fighting for a public safety fee for nonprofit organizations, because they do use our services. And in a city such as the size of Scranton, we have a lot of nonprofit institutions here. And I know that some nonprofit institutions are contributing to the city in the form of pilots, however, we have to get more out of the nonprofits, because the taxpayers are constantly getting slammed, and it's not right. Other than that, I do have just two requests for the night, two citizens' requests. There's a stop sign knocked down at the corner of Rockwell Avenue and Charles Street in North Scranton, no one's been out to fix it. So Mrs. Craig, if we could please contact Mr. Dewer, or Director Dewer, and ask him to have the stop sign repaired. And a second request about the property at 1346 Sanderson Avenue. It's in very poor shape. In 2011, the person who, or a person contacted the city about the property, spoke to one of the inspectors, however, nothing was done. However, to this day, there's been no progress, and it's 2013. So Mrs. Craig, if we could please contact Director Sitzinger and ask him to handle this situation in the best way he sees fit. And that's all for tonight.
Mr. Joyce, one thing I forgot to mention, and I do see a stack here, that Mr. Dewer, he did reply, and I do like to, I would like to thank him for sending responses on these, and a lot of times, we, especially myself, we're always complaining for a lack of response, but I do like, I would like to thank him for a response on these, and hopefully these requests will be taken care of.
Thank you.
5B, establishing no parking zone along the easterly side of Wyoming Avenue, State Route 3025, from Segment 30, Offset 2190, to Segment 30, Offset 2410, and along the southerly curb line of Large Street, 175 feet east from its intersection with Wyoming Avenue, to allow for safe-site distances for a proposed McDonald's restaurant at Wyoming Avenue and Large Street.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.